Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests, city staff, my colleagues on council. Welcome to the Portsmouth City Council meeting. I would now ask for everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now ask my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the minutes of a call meeting on October 24th, 2023, a regular meeting on October 24th, 2023, and a called meeting on November 6th, 2023. Do we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes?
With adoption.
Second.
I would ask my colleagues to please note a vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a need and have a presentation of a proclamation for Small Business Saturday.
If our Director of Economic Development and the representative from the EDA would please come forward.
I think we can use, I think we can use this mic. To this, from the city of Portsmouth. Whereas, this, the government of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are over 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, which account for 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States. They are credited for 63% of the new jobs created from 1995 to 2021. Small business employ about 46% of the employees in the private sector in the United States and represent 43.5% of gross domestic product. And whereas, by almost any measure, small businesses are vital or are vital part of the American economy and workforce, whereas, based on research released last year, if every Gen Z and millennial shopper spent $10 at a small business on Small Business Saturday, it would support $2 billion in local economic activity throughout the United States. The study also found that .68 of every dollar, 68 cents of every dollar at a small business in the United States stays in the local community and creates an additional 48 cent in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, Portsmouth, Virginia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Shannon E. Glover, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in Portsmouth, and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof and on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia to be affixed this 14th day of November 2023. Thank you, sir. And thank you, sir.
I would just say, one of the joys of my job is to have an opportunity to see people turn their ideas into small businesses. And I had people come forward who've had a passion for working with elderly and suddenly turned that into a business, or someone who has an idea for a great app that suddenly transforms the way they do business. I'm also proud to say that we have given over $200,000 to small businesses in the city of Portsmouth. That has allowed them to help with capital, marketing, and services. So this holiday, I encourage everyone to spend money with small business in Portsmouth because they are the drivers that make this community work. Thank you very much.
So I understand, gentlemen, you may not have said your names. So Mr. Mitchell, Malcolm Mitchell, and Brian Donahue, our Economic Development Director, and Mr. Mitchell is the Chairman of our Economic Development Authority. Thank you both. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require limit up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beeping. We ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now moved to the next item on our agenda, public hearing. Item 23-360, and our first item will be item A, CA-23-02. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Citywide ordinance granting the request of the city of Portsmouth to amend City Code Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance to allow an applicant to apply for a special exception to request modification of the required side yard setback for a single-family detached dwelling on a lot that is 30 feet or less in width. The planning commission recommended approval, and the actual ordinance you will be adopting is an ordinance amending and reordaining Section 40.2-535 Special Exceptions of Article 5 Administration and Chapter 40.2 Zoning of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding a new subsection 40.2-35, excuse me, 535B13 for the purpose of authorizing special exceptions for certain narrow residential lots.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if you would state your name, you could go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Julie Chop, Manager of Current Planning and Zoning with the Portsmouth Planning Department. This presentation will provide details on the proposed text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. Since 2021, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the BZA, has heard over 25 variance applications requesting approval to reduce the required side yard setbacks in order to construct a single-family dwelling on existing legal non-conforming lots that exist in many areas of the city. The majority of these narrow lots are typically 25 to 30 feet wide, are located in established neighborhoods such as Brighton, Prentice Park, and Ebony Heights, and are typically zoned urban residential or UR. The city's zoning ordinance requires a seven-foot minimum side yard setback when building a single-family dwelling on an interior lot in the UR district. The zoning ordinance allows flexibility by allowing an applicant to utilize the average side yard setback of neighboring residences, provided that the side yard setback is at least five feet. If the setback averaging option is not applicable to the property, or if the applicant wants to request a side yard setback that is less than five feet, an applicant currently has the option to apply for a variance to request the BZA's approval of a reduced setback. Because the, this request, when developing these narrow lots, has become a relatively common occurrence, it is appropriate to amend the zoning ordinance to provide a more flexible option for relief. A joint work session was held with the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission on July 18th to discuss possible solutions. At the September 5th Planning Commission meeting, a resolution was adopted initiating staff to prepare amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow an applicant to apply for a special exception rather than a variance to reduce the side yard setback. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment language is shown on this slide. This change allows an applicant to apply for a special exception to request that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve or review a request to reduce the side yard setback for a single-family dwelling on an interior lot that is 30 feet or less in width. This amendment allows the Board of Zoning Appeals to assess each special exception application individually to determine if the, if granting the modified side yard setback is appropriate. The BZA does hear special exception and variance applications, so the solution will likely not reduce the number of cases heard by the BZA. However, unlike variance requests, applications for a special exception do not require that the applicant prove that the request alleviates a hardship relating to the property. So removing this hardship requirement alleviates the burden on the applicant and provides more flexibility to the BZA members in deciding whether to approve or disprove the proposed special exception. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow applicants to request authorization to reduce the side yard setback for a single-family dwelling on lots that are 30 feet in less, or less in width through a special exception. This change will improve the development process by providing a more flexible and appropriate option for developing existing non-conforming narrow lots in the city. I will now stand by for any questions from council.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, how will this affect those who have been recently denied?
They will be eligible to apply for a special exception at any point.
Okay, immediately?
Immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Ms. Chop, thank you, ma'am. We do have a speaker for this particular item, and our speaker is Mr. Gary Bunting. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Gary Bunting. I live at 416 K Road. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Board of Zoning Appeals. As you may remember, in March, I came before y'all and spoke to y'all regarding the numerous variance applications that the Board of Zoning Appeals had been receiving regarding setback reductions for narrow residential lots. Most of these are, as Ms. Chop said, are in older neighborhoods where small lots were common, and it was very common to build houses with very small setbacks, or in some cases, almost no setbacks, when these lots were plotted. The current zoning ordinance, because of the setbacks, makes these lots virtually unbuildable. It's, with the setback, unless it reduces to the five foot, which is certain circumstances, with a seven-foot setback on a 25-foot lot, you're left with building a house that's 11 feet wide, which is impossible. Currently, the only means of relief is through a variance. However, the state code, the Virginia state code, a variance is not the proper tool for situations that occur repeatedly. And we've had 25, or approximately 25, applications in the past two and a half years or so. The proposed amendment will allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to determine the suitability of each request based on all the information and based on the specific situation. I'd like to thank council, and I'd like to thank planning staff for hearing our concern on this issue and bringing forward this ordinance. The Board of Zoning Appeals would ask that you vote to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Bunning, thanks to you and your leadership on the Board of Zoning Appeals for raising the issue. As you point out, this was a well-done collaboration between your team, the Planning Department, and the Planning Commission to kind of find the sweet spot on how to solve this, this problem. So I appreciate the work that you all put in to, to get us to this point.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other discussions? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This question for the internal city manager, is, is there a fee that has to be paid for those persons that had applied and then they can reapply under the new ordinance?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to pay the same fee again, right? Yes, they would have to.
So can, so if it's, the desire counsel, because of this change that we're doing to necessitate the development of those properties, can we waive those fees?
How far back?
Oh, I thought, I thought he said this was a recent issue that came up before the...
The ones they got, like how far back? I guess it was determined on how far back. I would have to probably bring that back.
Okay.
How far back would you want?
Well, I thought that it was something that came before the commission recently.
Do you want it to be the, for the last year?
Right. So, yeah.
I'll let that, if that's what council desires to do, I'll let you come back with a record.
So if it would, yeah. So if it would, please, council, let us provide the number in a report back, the number of applicants within the last year that were denied for this specific purpose, and determine if you all want to move forward with waiving that fee for reapplication.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other questions from my colleagues at council, we are in need of a motion and a second?
With adoption.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I, I, it is a public hearing. I made a mistake. Because it's a public hearing, you do not have to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing item. If you wish to come forward and speak on this item, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Anyone can come and speak on this public hearing item.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to ask a few questions. I remember not long ago, last month, I was in one of the special meetings about, it was too many small land being able to build on, and they was giving a discussion about the, the wealth and how much on each side. And I remember when I looked at some property and got it in 2014, it was given two feet on each side. And then I never did anything with it, so I passed it on to someone else, and I allowed them the opportunity. But when I started hearing them saying, I think it was last month, saying that from 14 up to now, nobody never told me that that person couldn't build on the property because it was too many small houses. But I found out a lot of people in this area, their income, and I won't going to speak about it at this moment, but I'm going to say, a lot of people are homeless, sleeping in cars, and have something small that they can afford the rent. Maybe they wouldn't be homeless, sleeping in their car. I'm talking about someone that I know personally, 80 years old and 62. So I'm looking at, this person have property that is 28 by 180. Is this going to be able to let that person be able to build the property, the house that they already designed? Would that be able to go with that 28 by 108?
Ms. Chop, do you want to address that?
They can, they can request a special exception.
Okay.
The ordinance deals with 30-foot lots are small, so that's 28, so they could request this. If it's approved, they could request a special exception.
Okay. I'm very concerned about whether it's going to be approved or not, because all those years from 14 to now, they still spending a whole lot of taxes. And I feel that's creating a burden on the person that put all this money in and hoping that they will have the opportunity to build. So I feel that it should be approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing item, remember, it needs to be germane to the public hearing item.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, got a question. Name is William Brick, Sterling Point. Brain, brain fog here.
It's okay.
I got, I got, I got a question. Now, this is a single-family dwelling that could be built, not a duplex, am I correct? Because if you've got a small lot, you don't need any more duplexes, because if you've got these specific areas, you don't want to bring those areas down, you want to bring them up with new construction, not new construction with a duplex to bring those areas down.
Ms. Adumwa, would you like to address that?
The code says single family, no duplexes.
Just as long as that's in the code, because like I said, if you're building in those areas, you don't want to bring them down, you want to bring them up by new construction, single family.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. You are not required to have signed up to speak on this public hearing item. Seeing no other speakers coming forward, this public hearing item is closed. Now, council colleagues, we are in need of a motion and a second.
With adoption.
Second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to item B, UP-23-12, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. South Side Resolution granting the request of Tawana Freiter with Gentle Touch Learning Center for a use permit to operate a childcare center on approximately 1.75 acres located at 670 Lincoln Street in the downtown special district, zoning sub-district, for future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Runnymede Corporation. Planning Commission recommends denial. The actual resolution reads a resolution granting a use permit, UP-2312, to Gentle Learning Center LLC to operate a child daycare center at 670 Lincoln Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Tawana Freiter. I am the owner of Gentle Touch Learning Center. We are currently located at 3621 Turnpike Road in Portsmouth, Virginia. As a director and owner of Gentle Touch Learning Center, I have been teaching at Portsmouth Public School for the past 14 years, and I have been operating my childcare center for the past eight years in Portsmouth. We are currently proposing to place a childcare center at 664 Lincoln Street where the Hampton Roads Healthcare Center was once operated. After my meeting with the city zoning department, I was informed that the site is located in a D1 SD sub-district. This made me aware that there are some health and safety issues that I will need to put in place before considering putting a childcare facility in that location. I myself have lived in the Prentice neighborhood for the first 12 years of living in Portsmouth, and understand how hard it is to find childcare centers close to home. Currently, there aren't any licensed childcare center located in the South Side neighborhood of Portsmouth. A Gentle Touch Learning Center is providing, proposing to have a learning center that operates from Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The center will admit children from the age of 12 weeks up to 12 years old. We propose having a total of 120 children with a team of 620 teachers rotating staff between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Gentle Touch Learning Center will be using 7,875 square feet of the building space and a 50 by 50 outdoor space for parking lot for playground area. Currently, our center on Turnpike Road is a part of the Virginia Quality Bird Through Five program, which implements by the Eastern Virginia Medical School, and we are also part of the cohort of childcare centers that are implementing the curriculum, Streamer Three, that is offered by the Center of Advanced Studies of Teaching and Learning at the University of Virginia as a curriculum option offering through a partnership with the Virginia Department of Education. As an early childhood care and education provider, we would like the opportunity to implement the same program in the South Side neighborhood. Studies have shown that children who receive an approved preschool curriculum education are more likely to form better habits of going to school regularly and are ready for the kindergarten curriculum. Currently, our school system struggles with chronic absenteeism, and having a program that is taken the, is taken, sorry, that is taken to close to home that gives parents the convenience of adopting, dropping off their children at the center before taking the bus to work would be helpful, or students who are in the public school system receive assistance with homework daily along with tutoring. We also have a summer camp readiness program for our children, students who are school age and preparing them for the next grade level. The property is within the Apex Superfund site. Lead contamination soil was found on the property from the nearby Brass and Bronx Foundry that operated from 1928 through 1978. Fallen extensive cleanup effort remediation was declared completed by the EPA in 2009. After reading the safety guidelines of the Apex EPA 2022 report that I've also given on page 14 through 16 and 19, we have decided that we would use the paved driveway where the health clinic once parked its mobile dental office for children and family. We would also use jersey walls along with chain link fence. Therefore, there would not need to be any digging for fencing into the ground. By fencing along the greenery area beside the parking lot, this will ensure that there is no possible way for a child to get in contact with any contaminated soil. The paved area of the playground will be covered with tar, turf. The paved area of the playground will be covered with tar, turf. We are also opening for suggestion for place in the playground in a different location. Since our last meeting with the planning department, we have hired environmental companies to test the lead levels in the soil outside at the building and also in the lead dust tests inside the building to ensure the safety of our families and staff. We have decided to also implement a plan of action that includes having a cleaning company come into the building once a month to conduct a deep clean-in to reduce any buildup. There would also be a lead test done twice a year to monitor the lead dust in our center. Living in Portsmouth for almost twenty years, I have, I am aware of the flooding and that takes place in our Effingham Street location. The building is located at the corner of Lincoln Street and Seventh Street. Therefore, when Effingham Street is flooded, the parents are able to take Court Street, Court Street or Port Center Parkway to premier place to enter the parking lot on Seventh Street to pick up their children when we are, when we call for evacuation. The center will implement a flood plan, management plan, in line with what is shown on page thirteen of two thousand and fifteen Flood Plan Management and Repetitive Loss Plan. Gentle Touch Learning Center will follow the guidelines set by the city for operating a childcare center in this location that was given by the planning department. The flood and plan building, we are proposing to open up eight walls and remove two desktop area. Also, we, into a break room, we are also add, adding sinks and countertops into the functional kitchen. We are in contact with the fire department, environmental health services, the engineering department. We are also working alongside with Keith Miller from TTC Corporation Environmental Science and Consultant to ensure that all the necessary safeguards are put in place to protect the well-being of the children who will be placed in our care. We will be testing for lead and asbestos in the building along with making sure we are following the guidelines with creating a playground for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Can we hear from staff in regards to the denial?
Ms. Adumwa?
In looking at the case, we, we had environmental concerns. The fact that it was on the ABEX site, we were concerned for the children. And as a result, we reached out to the Environmental Protection Agency, and two of their professionals came in and just gave the general understanding of the area, and they have agreed to come today to address questions that you, uh, may have about the site. We were concerned about the soil, we were concerned about lead inside the building, and it's important that children growing up not be impacted by those things. So, um, we recommended denial to the planning commission. The planning commission, after reading the report and listened to, the professionals also, uh, recommend denial of the case. But again, we do have the two professionals here that can address additional questions you might have about the environmental impacts of that general area.
Thank you, Mr. Adumwa. I, I thought that that was the issue with it being a superfund site. I just wanted to make sure that was the issue of denial. Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Well, I, I did have one question after reading the report. Um, not only is it a part of a superfund site, but also based on the report that the EPA has not released it administratively, is that, is that accurate? In the report, in the document, it says the EPA has not released it administratively. Could you come forward and address that? What that actually means? Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Council. My name's Lisa Denmark. I am the remedial project manager for the ABEX Superfund Site out of Philadelphia. We're at Four Penn Center, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the site, while the physical construction and all of the earth-moving was completed many years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Administratively, as far as deleting the site and it no longer being an active superfund site, it has not yet been deleted.
Okay.
Um, there's a number of, um, steps that happen before that can occur, and we have not completed all of those administrative steps. As far as additional work, um, being done at the site, there's no current work planned. However, there is an imminent new policy coming out from EPA on lead-contaminated sites, and we will evaluate the site against the new policy when it comes out within probably the year, but we're not, that's uncertain at the moment. So we definitely will, um, evaluate the site continually, and we do so every five years per CIRCLA, which is the regulation that oversees the work that we do.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold on, um, there may be another question for you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ma'am, for presenting.
Yes.
We know that there's a property that sits, um, parallel to that property and, um, was recently approved for a storage unit, uh, but we know that there are some specific, um, build-outs that can be on sites that are being evaluated by EPA. Um, so is this not, I mean, schools and daycares and apartments, anything that would require someone that would be using drinking water or playing in, like a playground, uh, those types of, um, build-outs are limited or prohibited in these spaces?
Yes, ma'am. So when we review these sites, because there is waste left in place, and at the ABEX site, there is lead left on-site, and we have two feet of cover as well as a warning layer, and then there's more soil on top of that. So where the safe storage facility is currently planned, and we've, I've been here to talk about that facility before, that will build up, and they will not be digging down.
Right.
Right? And the use of that property will not, you know, there's not going to be workers exposed to the soil.
Right.
They, much like the fire department and other facilities on that property, have paved the area, covered it in grass, and we don't have children or, you know, other people being exposed to that soil.
Right.
So the use of the property is something that we do regulate, and there are what we call institutional controls and, um, use restrictions that we agreed to with the city of Portsmouth many years ago, and they're in place such that if the city was even going to repair a sidewalk, they send me the information, and I review it, and work with your city construction and building departments to review that and make sure that nobody will be unnecessarily exposed to lead-contaminated soil.
Great. And I know that the former, uh, community health center, um, previously owned this, um, property, um, was it relayed over? Is it a new purchaser? Is the applicant the new owner, or are they looking to purchase, or just where is it?
So EPA does not necessarily get involved with ownership of the properties. My awareness is that the health department was a tenant to the shopping center that is on the property. I am not aware of the ownership changing hands in any way.
Sure. Yes, thank you.
So you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Now that we know that Ms. Freiter, uh, can't, uh, open a daycare learning center on that location, I would, I would like to have staff, uh, after the meeting, uh, to get with her in the coming days to perhaps, uh, point her in another direction where another location might be suitable for her business. There is, there is a shortage of businesses, daycare centers, uh, so I think it would behoove us to assist her in finding, uh, the proper location, if, if my colleagues are fine with that. I, I see the heads nodding, so maybe we could do that.
Thank you, sirs. Are there, are there any other questions from my colleagues? Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing item, if you would come forward, you have five minutes. And it must be germane to the public hearing item.
I thank the Lord for me be able to speak. My name is Shilla Joseph, and I would like to say, a lot of people don't know, in Washington Park and also any area that was around, I do know for a fact, people have died with asbestos and different other lead and whatnot. I just had a brother that died with asbestos with that superfund site. He used to work at the brake shoe place that they was located by Washington Park. I don't think it's a safe place. That's my opinion, because I feel that EPA and different ones, I don't think they did a good job, because like I said, my brother was diagnosed with asbestos. And I please beg everyone, nobody needs to be in there.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna, uh, suggest in deference to the, uh, the public safety employees in the audience, uh, I would like to move agenda item twenty-three dash three-seventy-three. Uh, once, I understand you haven't closed the public hearing, shame on me. Okay? Please continue.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. We're, we're all subject to making mistakes, as you can see. In any event, um, this is a public hearing. If you would like to come and speak on this particular public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, my name is George Luizu, and I live in Virginia Beach, and I'm the current owner of the, uh, the site that we are all speaking about. Uh, before I inquire this property, um, with the issues that, um, that, that came up, I did, we did have an environmental company come in and tested, uh, the site, and everything was fine, because everything is underground, uh, under the pavement, and, um, so, um, they said it wasn't an issue with any contamination, uh, at that time. So when the, uh, we addressed this with the city planning, they said, okay, well, if there's no issue on the outside of the parking, there would be an issue with the interior of the building. So after that, uh, was addressed by the city planning, we did the test on the inside of the building, which I believe you both have a caveat, both, uh, results, that the levels were below five, which is definitely would not affect any, uh, children with their well-being. So both reports are showing negative for lead. And as the playground, it will be on a asphalt area, and there will never be access to the grass area, and we will make sure of that, that has not happened. So on that note, I'm just gonna speak a little bit, just to tell you a little bit about what happened and how I came to this property. So, um, I got introduced to Portsmouth two years ago, when I met a prominent doctor that has his practice in Virginia Beach, and invited me to his house in Portsmouth. My first question to him was, why Portsmouth? Well, I found myself, I, well, I found for myself why, when I visited his house off High Street, and we took a stroll down the water at midnight while learning the long history of Portsmouth. I'm a resident on Virginia Beach, and most of my investments are in Virginia Beach. When an opportunity came to purchase four acres with a nostalgic shopping center and the sheriff's academy off Lincoln Street, I did not hesitate. This is the first time that I inquire a property that the tenants found me to lease them a space. The shopping center, two months later, is ninety percent occupied by a father and a daughter as tenants with a boxing gym and a dance studio, the sheriff's office, and hopefully a daycare. For the last two months, while I was remodeling the place, I had the pleasure to meet most of the neighbors, and they were so happy to see all the improvements and an opportunity to walk their kids, grandkids, to a daycare that also offered after-school programs. I understand the members of the planning commission have concerns with the building close to the superfund site. We have done two environmental studies, like I mentioned before, so far testing the lead outside and inside of the building, and the results were way below any levels that will affect the well-being of the children. I assure you, as an owner, and Tawana as the tenant, that we will make every effort to make the facility safe for the children. Hopefully, the council will see this benefits of having a daycare so close to residential area, much needed, giving every child an opportunity to a better education, and Tawana to celebrate on November twenty-fifth as a small business owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you would like to come and speak on this matter, you can please come forward, you will have five minutes, state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I move that the, uh, recommendation of the planning commission to deny, uh, be upheld.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is denied, seven, six-zero.
Thank you. Now we've moved to the city manager's report. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Mayor, I, uh, I move that we change the order of business, uh, in deference to, uh, men and women in public safety in the audience tonight to address item, uh, twenty-three-dash-three-seventy-three.
Okay, so in order to do that, we will need to suspend the rules of, of the order that we have, so we'll, we'll...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, do we need to vote on the suspension of the rules, ma'am? So we will need to vote on the suspension of the rules? So if you would please vote electronically?
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, hold, 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 hold on, slow, slow down. The screen is up. Now, would you please?
Okay.
Now, would you please vote electronically? There you go. All right.
This, this item is adopted six-zero. Okay, now for...
Now, now, right, now we, we vote on the, we already moved and seconded the motion to move the item up on the agenda. So we just need to vote electronically on that. So if you would please...
Mayor, I move that we move agenda item twenty-three-dash-three-seventy-three up as the next agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the agenda item up forward, if you would please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Now we are at item twenty-three-dash-three-seven-three, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering regarding this item?
Members of the city council, you have, um, two, you have two options, and I'm just gonna start with the option one. A resolution authorizing collective bargaining of public employees and officers.
So, to the point, um, Mr. Moody, you have the floor. You, you still, oh, no, that was, that was from the last one, I didn't take you off, I'm sorry.
But I can have the floor.
So, Madam Clerk, would you please read, read, read the option again?
A resolution authorizing collective bargaining of public employees and officers.
We have a resolution?
With adoption.
Second.
We do have, are we gonna entertain the speakers on this item? That's what we're gonna do right now. So we do have some registered speakers. We have a motion and a second. We do have registered speakers for this item and our first registered speaker will be Mr. Sean Tiat. Sir, when you come forward, if you would state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, Councilman Moody, Councilman Tillage, Councilman Hugo, Dr. Whitaker, Madam City Manager. I come before you this evening first as a reminder to everyone on the dais to always put Portsmouth first and be watchful of anyone who comes to you offering any type of sweet deal, product or service, I don't care what it is. Always remember to ask yourself, what is in the best interest of the city? That's what you were elected for and we trust that you'll be a good steward of that politician's second. We need strong leadership, continue to be that. And I know now that some of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, I'm not speaking against collective bargaining, I'm here to support what's in the best interest of the city and try to convince you and the citizens watching that collective bargaining for our city is not a great idea. However, especially when you take a closer look at the fine print, you immediately notice that the agreement is lopsided with regards to who benefits versus who assumes all the risks, responsibility and liability. I noticed a newspaper article today that read Portsmouth City Council is expected to vote on whether or not to grant city employees the ability to collectively bargain, to negotiate for better wage and safety measures and working conditions. And I had to stop for a minute and scratch my head. Reason being, because all of us know that the city recently purchased, every member a second set of turnout gear. The city recently purchased new fire trucks, ambulances and so forth. And also to put icing on the cake, you all, including with the city manager, increased our pay to one of the highest in the region. We got folks who left the city beating on the door trying to get back. They don't necessarily reside in the city, but they're gonna take that money to the city that they live in, but they coming to get this money. And I say that sometimes, you ever had a child that always asks, asks, give me, give me, give me, give me, give me? Meanwhile, we got more stuff on the way, tools, equipment, personnel, staff and so forth and so on. And there, I want to, the reason why I make this a point is because if you do the research and you look back at twenty fifteen, January third, we, some of my colleagues, we got y'all caught up in another thing. Whereas that thing being, the captains want to be exempt versus none exempt. It cost y'all over half a million dollars, which me, I'm a taxpayer, I live in the city of Portsmouth, so I have a vested interest, I have skin in the game on this thing. So I take this very seriously and also I work with the fire department. However, as I close, the city's not a for-profit organization. We can't afford to experiment and throw monies away. When you decide about a collective bargaining agreement, you tie your own hands. So now that we gotta make a decision on whether or not, when it's time to respond to emergency call, is that within the contract? Is that not within the contract? I hop on a fire truck. I'm considered management in a collective bargaining agreement. But right now, without that, I can go to the fire station, I can ride the fire truck, provide the services to each one, every one of you. I ain't worried about no contract. This is public safety. Do not put any ties or restrictions on us to be able to do our job and be able to serve and protect you. You may think that, hey, look, I'm doing a good thing. You can't tell me five reasons on how this is gonna benefit the citizens of the Portsmouth, our children and our young people that are dying in the streets and so forth and so on, other than repeating what has been shared with you. Now, my colleagues freely speak about how we got Councilman Moody and Hugo in the bag. I don't know what that mean. My colleagues speak about Councilman Tillage wanting to run for mayor and if he going to back us, then we going to support him. Hold on there. Y'all make your decisions until you get here. So what I'm telling you is do the right thing for the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. Make put us first in every negotiation. We're the ones that depose voting for you, not folks in Chesapeake, Suffolk, Chukka Tuck, Carolina and so forth and on, we at the polls voting for you.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, um, Mr. Tiat, you were recently promoted to, was it battalion, battalion chief?
Yes, sir.
The first African-American in the city of Portsmouth to be promoted to that position.
Yes, sir, the first black battalion chief for the city of Portsmouth.
Are you, are you aware of the number of firefighters in the city? How many firefighters do we have?
Our numbers are right approximately two hundred and thirty. Chief, man, he's right there, he can give you the exact quote on that number, chief, am I right? All right, he gave me a hands up on that.
Two hundred and thirty?
Yes, sir.
And and of that two hundred and thirty, how many are African-American?
Right now, our numbers are right around thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two. When I started twenty-four years ago, it was like thirty. So in twenty-five years, we only added five more people to the ranks.
So there was a presentation earlier from a Mr. O'Connor and he referenced the percentage and how the union represents the force. My question is, what will this do to the voice of minority firefighters as a group?
Oh, that's a wonderful question. Number one, unequal representation. Those who are represented by the bargaining agent who paid union dues got a lot of voice than the blacks and minority locals. This will eliminate our voice unless we agree to pay union dues. So if you adopt this for the city, our folks in general services are struggling. So you gonna force them, if they wanted to have an equal voice to some of the larger organizations that got you here or what you call special interest, they gotta pay thousands of dollars in union dues. What sense does that make? That don't do number further divide us. And then here's the thing, why would we commit to something, something new? We can't experiment with that when we dealing with lives and public safety. This ain't a game. This ain't no for-profit organization. So does anybody, here's the thing, does anybody else have any questions on the dais about this important matter? Because like I said, we have organizations with Brother Redmond, has a community take back the block for some of our youth, they need help and assistance. So we got any extra money or resources, that needs to be reinvested into our young people. They are the future. We need to have just as much zeal and motivation as we move things up on the agenda to support our young men and women in the community. They want to be able to see that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to to publicly state that collective bargaining has been an issue that has been issue in the city for at least the last three years since previous councils approved it. It passed seven to zero with many members sitting on this dais who are now against it. They voted for it just two or three years ago. And to speak to a point that was just kind of made political, when I ran for city council in twenty twenty-two, I agreed, I ran on collective bargaining. So the, the point that was brought out, whether or not I decide to run for mayor or not is irrelevant. What I will say is twenty twenty-four is election season. And so whoever runs is fair game. But that has nothing to do with anybody's decision, whether or not to support collective bargaining or not. This issue is solely based on the, the issues that have been brought forth. I have been in, working in the Virginia General Assembly, working with the legislation that was passed in two thousand and nineteen for collective bargaining. And so I just want to put that disclaimer out there. And if I do decide to run, that is once, trust me, the public will be more than aware of that. But I just wanna put that out there. So until you hear anything from Vernon Tillage, just know it's not true. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We, there, there will be no outbursts, no clapping. If, if, if you do not act in accordance with the rules of the chamber, you will be asked to leave. That is the policy. It's not the mayor telling you what to do. Okay? Thank you. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. On any issue, there are always two sides to an argument and I respect Mr. Tiat presenting his side. What I don't respect is inferring that any agreement would cause citizens concern about whether these firefighters or public safety would respond to a call that's uncalled-for, unprofessional, and is just simply not true. So I think I made my point.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, um, first of all, that's, that's not what Mr. Tiat said.
Yes, it is.
You're, you're misquoting him and you're taking what he said out of, out of context. I will be voting against this measure for several reasons. One, because of the expense that the citizens of Portsmouth are going to incur because of this. It is something that is unnecessary because I have yet to hear anything that has been presented that will be of a benefit by unionizing that the firefighters, police, general service workers are not already receiving. And so to expend that amount of funding, I think is irresponsible. Also, I'm going to repeat what I said earlier in the session when we had the chief of police to come and to speak very openly and transparently about how unionization will hinder his managerial performance. And for all of us that come in here that talk about your concern about crime and that crime is something we need to address, and then we have our top law enforcement person to come and speak openly to citizens and council and tell us that this would hinder his performance, I, I think that to ignore that would be senseless. And then the other issue is the concern I have in regards to how this union, the fire union has operated in regards to what we have heard and what was spoken about our fire chief and that there was a no confidence vote that was taken against him by the union in the context of when we see major diversity occurring. And so I'm not gonna support that. I'm not gonna support it, not, not as an African-American elected official, cuz I know what that's about. And then for you to think that bringing in the police union in a majority African-American city, where we know what the police union has stood for, we know that there has never been a case where the police union has seen an unlawful killing of a black person and I've never seen them speak against their own. They always circle the wagon. I'm not gonna vote for bringing that into this city. And so when I hear the police chief telling us what he did, when I see what this union has done, and then also when I look at the election results from outside of Virginia, Kentucky just made an election of governor because of a person who was in a position to support the Breonna Taylor case, her killing, and Cameron supported the police union. And that was one of the major reasons black folks then vote for him. And so I'm not going to perpetuate what it is. I know that the racism that's in this city has been perpetuated by unions and just to come in here and state these claims about perpetuating security, that is nothing but a camouflage. And I don't care if you do have a trickle of black folks in your organization. We've always had class collaboration that has led to discriminatory practices. And so I'm gonna vote against this because I think that this is not in the best interest of perpetuating fairness, it's suppressing the vote of those black officers, it is also hindering the job that our chief needs to do. And I have yet to hear from any general service workers, I have heard from the police, it is purely the fire union. And so I will not be supporting it.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. We always know that some of these situations come up and, and there are situations where it's contentious, where there's separation, we agree to not agree, and we have some members who are for, some members who are not for. We know that next year is election year. But as a member who was on this council in two thousand and seventeen, when we first had an opportunity to look at collective bargaining, we did move forward with that and we have learned a lot more since that timeframe, a lot on the positive, a lot on the negative. I believe that a lot of the changes that we have seen have happened as a result of the issue being brought before us because there was always issues with, do we have enough sworn officers? Do we have enough police officers? And, and I think we still struggling in that avenue. Do we have enough fire trucks? Do we need apparatus that's going to allow our firefighters to go in and, and change their gear in the event of a fire? So I believe that some of the things started to happen aggressively to, to counteract this situation. If you, if there had not been a union, if it had not been a force to come forth, where would we be? Would we still be eighty officers short and, and seventy firefighters down? I think this is an option for us to take a look at consistency in how we employ, how we hire, how we retain. And I get, I get the issue. I get the issue that there may be some, some fees or some, some, some union issues that may be related to it. But I think that this council is forward-thinking enough to make sure that we take the interest of everybody because I have to live in this city as well. And whether I was gonna vote for it or not for it, or twenty twenty-four coming or whatever, it's just something that I've had on my heart since two thousand and seventeen when I first joined this council and I think that it is something that we need to look at because if we let off, will we stop hiring? Will we, will we lose officers? Will those pay raises stop somewhere? Will they not get funded in between budget cycles? And this, this is not against our, our interim city manager has done an awesome job. Half of the things that you have now is because of some of the hard work that, that she has done and put in place. But I think it's time for this council to start thinking what we need to do moving forward with our citizens, with our departments. And this is just a fire, yeah, this is one department, but we will have to look at it for police because that's a separate entity. And we have to look at it for general wage employees because that's a separate entity. We can't wrap all of this up in one basket. We have to start someplace. So those are my comments and I'll yield to other council members who may have some comments to add as well.
I don't have any comments at this time. I'll make my comments at the end. We'll go on with the next speaker. The next speaker is Tiffany Stewart. Ma'am, if you come and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Tiffany Stewart. I've been a paramedic with the Portsmouth Fire Department for seven years and my family lives in the Port Norfolk area of the city. lives in the Port Norfolk area of the city. After completing paramedic school, I applied to Portsmouth because it's one of the few agencies that allows single role paramedics. I only ride the ambulance. I never answer a call on a fire truck. The equipment necessary to suppress fire is known best to the firefighters that do that job. Just because I work in the same station and respond to the same calls does not mean I know what tools they need to complete their mission successfully. The street level employees, the men and women executing our job every day, are the ones that know what it takes to do the best work most efficiently. Our current system requires us to request through our chain of command the things that we need to accomplish our mission. And then we wait, and we hope that behind closed doors, when the sausage gets made, we hope that our department administrators advocate for us. Many of the things that we ask for don't directly benefit the employees. Asking for fire trucks, more ambulances, and advanced equipment doesn't benefit me financially. These resources are utilized by the community on their worst day, when an emergency ends and a 911 call. This is not, I say this not as just an employee, but as a concerned member of this community. In 2021, my family was victim to a house fire. While the damage is still being repaired, everyone was safe, and for that, I'm grateful. However, it is worth noting that on my own family's fire, the ambulance that was responding was not from the city. Should any member of my family have needed medical care, they had to have waited for a mutual aid ambulance, because we had no medic available. What we are asking for this process of collective bargaining allows the people that do the job to directly advocate for themselves with their employer. We are not asking for a blank check or to raise taxes. Every cent of this contract is subject to council's approval. This is about collaboration, respect, and accountability. Our employees deserve to have the consistency when they come into work tomorrow to have the same standards as today. Middle-of-the-night policy changes that are protected by AP 17 happen all over the state, including right here in Hampton Roads. Just because it's legal doesn't mean that it's right. This has little to do with the money and so much more to do with accountability. We stand at a pivotal moment in our community's history, a moment that demands our attention and our collective action. It is time to embrace a system that New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, and almost every other major city in America has functioned under for decades. You have the opportunity to pass historic legislation that allows workers to have a seat at the table and a voice in the decisions that directly impact their lives. In 1961, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "In our glorious fight for civil rights, we must guard against being fooled by false slogans such as 'right to work.'" It is a law that robs us of our civil rights and job rights. Its purpose is to destroy labor unions and the freedom of collective bargaining by which unions have improved wages and working conditions of everyone. By implementing a collective bargaining resolution tonight and later in ordinance, we commit to ensuring that no individual is left behind, no voice goes unheard, and no one is unfairly treated. It is about standing for the principle that in this city, everyone matters. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Kurt Dietrich.
Good evening, everybody, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. If I could ask everybody in the room here that's, uh, here tonight in support of collective bargaining to please stand up with us. I'd like Chris and Troya to come up here with us. Some of you may know me. My name is Kurt Dietrich, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the president of the Portsmouth Professional Firefighters and Paramedics and Dispatchers Union, IAFF Local 539. I'm here to urge you to support the adoption of this collective bargaining resolution for public employees. Embracing collective bargaining fosters a collaborative relationship between employees and employers, leading to improved working conditions, fair wages, and enhanced job satisfaction. It's a critical step to creating a positive and harmonious working environment that benefits both the workforce and the community. City employees, if they so choose, should be allowed the same basic right that public employees in 49 other states have. We started this process going on four years now. You may have already known that we had a work group that was formed in 2020 through 2021. Some of you were on that city council that approved it. That work group was charged with bringing back an ordinance outlining the policies and procedures, as well as defining the bargaining units, the representation process, certification and decertification process, and dispute resolution, all of which is required under the Virginia State Code. That was submitted, all of you, in July, when we turned in 90% of the full-time employees of the Portsmouth Fire Department's authorization cards selecting Local 539 to represent them in the collective bargaining process. While tonight's vote will pave the way for supporting collective bargaining for public employees, the scope of bargaining in the outlined ordinance will need to be adopted next, so that city management and the employees can move forward. By city council supporting collective bargaining, you will demonstrate your commitment to fairness, equity, and the well-being of those who dedicate themselves to public service. This proactive approach not only strengthens the bond between the city and its employees, but also contributes to the overall efficiency and effectiveness of public service. So I kindly ask your consideration and your support for this adoption. Uh, we also have, uh, these are, this is Chris and Troya from the UE Union, and they're here organizing our general wage employees. So this is not just about the firefighters. We happen to be the ones that are leading the charge. We've had a union in this city since 1937. We've been a leader in the labor movement. And yeah, we play in politics, but that's what unions do. So if you have questions, I'll take them. If not, thank you. I look forward to your support.
Well, one thing I would like to comment on is a statement you just made, Mr. President. You play in politics. No, no, you, you, you have your chance to speak. Now it's going to be my turn to speak. You play in politics. I find that relatively interesting in that people's lives are not political, sir. People's lives are not political. The citizens of this city that you all just said you proposed to take care of, and, and my, I think my, my credibility is, is, is pretty good. The things that you have said here tonight, it just doesn't add up. And let me give you an example. The reality is you play in politics. That doesn't align with taking care of the business of everybody in the community. And when I said to you, and, and I'm going to say to you what I said to you when you accosted me the other night, sir, just, just let, just let me finish. But when you came to me the other night, I shared with you very clearly that I support what's in the best interest of the citizens of Portsmouth. And let me explain that to you, what I meant by that, so everybody can hear it. What we just heard tonight in a presentation, and I know it's not a perfect world, and you have every right as an organization to do the work that you do, but it's not a perfect world. At the end of the day, our city and our leadership have made strides. We have worked very closely to try to give you the things we want. Everything doesn't happen at the same time that we want it. And the young lady who, um, just came up, she said, "It is about financial." You did mention financial. So it is a financial component, and we understand that. You should get paid a fair wage for the work that you do, but you can't disregard the work that has been done and the work that we're continuing to do, the work that we put in. And at the end of the day, when Mr. O'Connor came up, the truth of the matter is, what we asked was, there were some questions asked, no one addressed it. What, what exactly collaboration? What exactly would collective bargaining give you today? Give you today that you're not getting? Collaboration? I saw the chief just sit by the team. Is that, is that, is that collaboration? I think so. I also heard a lot of things from management that they're doing proactively to improve the quality of life for our firefighters. I think that's collaborative as well. The other thing that I heard that I think was collaborative, that we're all in this together, that we're one city, that's collaborative too. I heard what the chief said. The chief desires that we work collaboratively together. Why can't we try that methodology? Collaboration and work together. Why can't we look at what's in the best interest of all the citizens of Portsmouth? Because at the end of the day, we care too, believe it or not. We love our firefighters, but we care too, and we care about everyone in the city of Portsmouth. And there will be some people adversely impacted as a result. We can do a better job of collaboration, and I think with our current management, and if there's a different management, they will perhaps do the same thing. See, because at the end of the day, this body, this council, does have a say. And yes, they will change too. But here's the good news. Members of the fire department will change as well. Look at where we've came, come from. Remember a couple of years ago, we didn't have the compliment. We were struggling. We're doing some really good things in the city of Portsmouth to attract. We got a waiting list now. Folks are coming back to our city. They're serving our city, and they want to be here. No one is against you all guys. See, some of you guys, you, you got it, you got it kind of confused. You believe that if someone is not with you, they're against you. And I don't accept that as a, as, as a modality. I really don't. If people are against you, it may be valid reasons that are against the process today. Does it have to be today? We are a city that 50%, well, it might not be 50, but it's close to 50% of our land, we do not derive any tax revenue from. I know you've brought these in, information about other cities and other localities that participate. Well, they're not Portsmouth. And financially, they're not Portsmouth. And if you want me to believe that if you set up a collective bargaining unit and you're not going to have issues, then, um, I just don't believe that. Because I think anytime you interject people in a conversation, when it deals with money, when it deals with, as you say, sir, po- politics, it gets ugly. And when it gets ugly, I've seen some of the ugly things you've done without collective bargaining. When it gets ugly, who loses when it gets ugly? Let's be grownups in the room. Who loses when it gets ugly? Our citizens lose. Our cities lose when it gets ugly. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear. I don't have anything against anybody in the room. Levin, when, when, when you had issues, when your son, I was there for you. I was there for your family. I'm just, I'm just sharing with you. Let's, 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 let's talk about how we do things. So what I'm sharing was, let's be, let's be, let's be open, let's be open, because this is serious business.
Point of order.
And don't, and don't just.
Point of order.
Sir, sir, sir. There's no point of order I'm speaking. And you don't, you don't have the floor. You don't have the floor.
Can you acknowledge my point of order?
Your point of, I'll acknowledge your point of order. I am speaking currently, so your point of order is not accepted.
You haven't heard what my point of order is.
Go ahead, say, you state your point of order.
Part of the council rules is not having direct comments towards people, and to call people out by their names, mentioning a personal situation that they've been in, I don't think that has anything to do with collective bargaining or the issue.
I said I was there for him. I didn't mention any personal situation, so.
But can we stay to the topic?
We, 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 we are staying to the topic. Here's, here's the reality. We'll stay to the topic. The re, the reality is, everybody has challenges that we all go through. And what I'm sharing with you is, we all work as a family, and the family works together. And as a result, that's how we should approach the things we do. And you all have had your turn to make a comment? I've had my turn to make a comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Simmons.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of the city council. My name is Elizabeth Simmons. I live at 475 Water Street in the city. I'm a former member of this council and here to remind you that in 2020, I was a member of the majority 7-0 vote that did vote to approve and begin the conversation of collective bargaining in Portsmouth. I didn't approve that just for firefighters. I wear their logo tonight because it's what I had to support this group. But I think collective bargaining and unionization of city workers works. I think it's important. I think it's fair. I think it's fair to all employees. Earlier today, I was at a, a luncheon, uh, held at the Fire Union Hall, and there were probably 20 people there who had nothing to do with the Portsmouth Fire Department or any fire department. They were, they were city employees from our neighbors. I also worry and think about the fact of what we spend to train all of our city workers, particularly our police and fire, but also our general wage employees. We spend a lot of investment in time and money and energy to, to keep those employees, and we want to keep them here. We don't want them to run to Chesapeake and run to Virginia Beach. We know Virginia Beach is getting ready to discuss this very same topic. They already have the ability to pay more. If they're going to offer better benefits and more things, that's one more reason for people to move. I want to keep Portsmouth, uh, competitive in the region. I want to keep the folks that we have that are great, and I encourage you to vote for this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Levin Turner.
Good evening, council. My name's Levin Turner. I've been mentioned already one time this evening. You know where I stand. I sat through the work session. I think I know where all of you stand. I take you at your word, because it's important. I've served this community for 17 years. Almost half of my life, I've served this community. And having a seat at the table is very important to me, and the political aspects that have been brought up tonight, and the tactics that we take of informing the public that multiple fire trucks and ambulances are out of service. We didn't bring up the fact that in my station just this week, we had a Virginia Beach fire truck. We didn't bring that up, because we are making progress, because that's what it is. It's collaborative. We're working together. But we had a ladder truck. We didn't have a ladder truck. We had an engine. We were riding an engine. We didn't bring that up, because we're collaboratively working together. We're not there yet. We understand that. But we want the end user to have a seat at the table, so we can discuss it, because we know what we're dealing with. We know when fire stations go all summer without AC. That's the point. And I'd like to, I'd like to defer the rest of my time before things get too emotional to my brother, who was not here today, to sign up. So I'd like to defer mine and yield the floor to my brother.
Sir, council rules do not allow you to yield your speaking time. He would have to have signed up as a registered speaker in order to speak.
Yes, sir.
That is the council rules.
Council rules also call for decorum, and mentioning me out of turn is probably not a part of decorum, so I would appreciate the opportunity from one of my brothers, because Councilman Whitaker specified there's a whole lot of firefighters. I'm trying to allow one of my union brothers an opportunity to speak.
Sir, that is not the protocol as it relates to yielding your time. You cannot yield your time. If he wanted to speak, he needed to sign up as a speaker, as everyone else did, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, I was just trying to allow for equity and opportunity and a diverse input, which is what this should be, and he couldn't get here by 6:30 to sign up. So thank you for my opportunity to speak. I appreciate all of you and the thankless job that you do up here. And understand that no matter what brush we are painted with, we're not here to get rich. We're not here to take people's money. We know we can't raise taxes. We just want a subject matter expert to be at the table to talk about things. You have people talking up, you have people coming up here to testify to you about, oh, I'm, I'm in management, and I'm not part of the collective, uh, the unit. Well, technically Battalion Chief and below, based on the ordinance that we proposed, would have been a part of the bargaining unit. So that's what y'all can define. You can define it. It's your playbook. It just gives us a seat at the table to bring our knowledge about fire trucks, about ambulances, about service delivery to the community, because that's what it's all about. It's not about playing politics and using my son's illness as a platform or anything like that. It's about serving the community, which I've done tirelessly for 17 years. And this is a great way forward, because even as the, the police chief said, it'd be great to get those pay incentives, because he and I have been here, he's been here a little bit longer than me, and he's done a lot better than me. He's the chief. But those paying, those pay plans, we've done that before. We've tried that. But come, come January of '25, there's going to be new people up here. The only thing that can last is a contract. I'll still be here begging for the same thing, the service to our community, just like I have the last 12 years, as I've served as an executive board member of this local. That's what collective bargaining does. It gives stability. That's what the community needs. The fear mongering must stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Stewart.
Wow.
Wow. It's Tinson here. Thank you for having me. My name is Mark Stewart. I'm a business owner and a homeowner here in Portsmouth. I'm a military veteran, retired after 20 years of service in the Coast Guard and the Marines. And I was the recipient of the services of the Portsmouth Fire Department at my own house. So as you might imagine, this issue is very near and dear to me. I'm also on the Port Norfolk Civic League. I've come here to express my support for collective bargaining. During my military service, there's been a lot of talk to hear tonight about the chain of command, about a communication, about efficiency for the people who are on the ground working. And as a business owner and a retired military veteran, I can tell you that I have never seen effective communication between the administrative arm, or the financial arm, or the procurement arm of a government organization and the operators on the ground. I did 20 years exactly because I love being the first one through the door. I love being the first one on the scene. That is where I feel like I'm called to be, which is obviously why I feel some kinship with the fire department here. Because the people who are sitting behind you, me rather, the fire department who is here, they're not very interested in playing politics. They're not very interested in all of this he said, she said stuff that's been going on here. They just need the right equipment, the right support, the right stability to be able to execute their job effectively and efficiently. I'm here to also say I've heard a lot about the cost, saying that we can't afford it. I'm here to tell you as a business owner that hemorrhaging your personnel due to lack of training, advancement opportunities, and a streamlined communication process up and down their chain of command is sure to precipitate a loss of efficiency and a higher cost. We cannot afford, in the city of Portsmouth, to continue the status quo. All city employees deserve the right to be able to unionize, including the regular wage employees like the gentleman that just got denied to come up here and speak, who I had a conversation with at the fire department earlier. It costs too much to train members and then lose them soon thereafter. I would also like council to consider the quality of the character of the individuals that have come before you this evening to try to request that they be able to represent themselves. I would ask that council think about how they would feel if they were in the shoes of the first person who comes on a scene, a difficult scene. A scene where the manufacturers of the equipment and the procurement folks for the equipment, the city manager and the mayor who are trying to support the fire department. All, everybody who's in this chain, they can't anticipate what that person is going to encounter that night. But that person who's the first one on scene, they know what's going on. They get there, they know that they're going to have to go to sleep when they get off of their shift and live with the actions that they do. Inaction for that person is not an option. That person deserves a seat at the table. I would also like to point out that just like my time in the military, it's become very apparent to me since I've been paying attention to this issue that the senior leadership, as it were, is always appointed. Which means the senior leadership's priorities are on the priorities of those who appoint them. And seeing as the general population of the fire department that's responding to my house fire with equipment from another city are interested in stopping my house from burning down and not interested in manipulating city politics, they're not likely to find themselves in management. Management is disconnected from the operations. That has been my experience my entire life, including all 20 years, which I was in the Coast Guard at a small boat station, which is very similar to a fire station. I think that's all I got. Please support collective bargaining. Allow the folks who are out there on the front line, literally putting their lives on the line, have a voice at your table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take everyone a trip to Realville. By Realville, let's get real. And next year, this council might change. Who knows? We might have a, another city manager. You know, the present city manager listed the accomplishments that she's been able to provide to our firefighters. But what's to say the next city manager may, may be do, doing something entirely different, might be another council that's not as supportive. Our men and women who go in to protect us, they go into a fire situation, they go into the unknown. They should, their families and them should not be exposed to the unknown of politics. Somebody mentioned politics. In, in the years I've sat on this council, I've seen them have to come here on different years during the budget process, which is a political process. I've seen them have to come here and, and literally beg for a raise. The salary increase they got this year is fine. That goes to this council and this city manager. But they should not have to face the unknown each fiscal year. It should not happen. So I'm supporting this because I feel they need consistency. Them and their families should not have to deal with the unknown. It's bad enough that they deal with the unknown in their jobs day to day. So I'm supporting this.
Are there any other comments from our colleagues on council? Seeing none, Ms. Terry has asked for the floor. So Ms. Terry, you have the floor.
As I was sitting here, and I appreciate everybody's passion because this is a huge lift, and it will be very impactful for the city. But as I sit here, and the young man who came up, I don't even believe he's a firefighter, but he had the shirt on. The last gentleman who showed up at the empowerment forum and completely lost it because he wasn't getting his way and he wanted to be heard so bad, it was so embarrassing. When I think about if that is, if those are the tactics associated with, I want to be heard, do what I say, then we're setting ourselves up. Of course, like I mentioned to council, becoming a union would be the easiest lift for me because I wouldn't have to do any work. I could send everything to the union. But of course, I am considering our citizens. I am considering our citizens first. And when I think about the impact that this is going to have on a city that is trying to pull itself up and move forward, I consider that a heavy lift for the city. And who's going to save us from that? Also, I don't know if it's public information or if I can, but there are a few firefighters who've already filed a complaint against the city manager interim because, and the fire chief, because they felt like they weren't being promoted in the, the way they wanted, or they weren't being heard. Again, we're putting ourselves in a situation where, again, the firefighters want to, they're taking it to a political stance, and they're doing way too much. I understand, we are doing everything we can now. Yes, I don't know if I'm going to be here or not, but I still live in the city and it matters to me. I don't know how council is going to vote up here. I'm good either way. But I recognize the things that y'all have done that maybe the public doesn't know what you're doing in the background. And you stand here and say, I want, you know, it's for the city, for the city. I think of 17 or 18 firefighters out of the complement of 300 or 200 and some only live in the city. So you'll take your funds, just put this city in harm's way financially, and then go back to your cities. Again, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I care about the citizens because this is just not a fire issue. It is a city of Portsmouth employee issue. It is a city of Portsmouth issue, all department, 18 departments, not just fire. And I hope that the council recognizes that. Their hands won't be tied just for fire. It's going to be tied for the entire city government. You know, I wish there was something that we could do. And again, I want to mention, you talk about a ladder truck. Y'all broke the last new ladder truck you just got. Horse playing. So let's not talk about you had to borrow one because you broke it. You know, and it's a shame we sit up here and we throw these things around because people don't know the truth behind the scenes. But again, we, this council has bent over backwards and done a lot of things. They do things all the time. They make sure that our employees, especially public safety, get what they need. If anything, however they decide, it's going to be what it is. But I would hope that they really take a deeper look. Maybe they need to put something on ordinance that say guarantee pay increase for two years. Maybe that'll satisfy you. Because I know Councilman Hugo thinks you're not going to come as the first step to ask for more money. That's the very first thing you're going to come and ask for. Absolutely. You shaking your head no, but I see the rest because I've been, I've been on the phone, I know. So therefore, I'll yield. But what I'm saying is, I hope the citizens understand what this is going to mean for them. We are about to go through budget deliberations. What is it going to cost the city? Again, not voting to do it doesn't mean it goes away forever. You can come back next year with a new council. But they need to consider what's happening right now. And I, I will yield to that. But the young man with the little shirt on that came up here, he was so disrespectful. So disrespectful. And I hope they under, and they know how disrespectful he was. And to the point where they asked the fire union, you need to apologize. Not one time, not one of these firefighters in the union came to apologize for the actions of this young man that spoke on their behalf.
Point of order.
I yield. I just wanted y'all to know.
What's your point of order, Mr. Moody?
Well, my point of order is, once again, council rules, we, we're, we're, our rules say that we don't call anyone out by name. Or, or point them out in the crowd. It's, it's, it's just unprofessional, is what it is.
Okay, o, 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 okay, Mr. Moody. I hear you loud and clear.
Can we call for the vote?
I will call. There, I'm going to ask for more discussion first before I call for the vote. Okay? Sir, 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 sir. If, if you, if you, if you would let me do the, if you would let me run this part, and, and then we'll be fine. We, the proper order is there was a motion and a second. Then there's additional discussion. We didn't have, we were discussing off of what the speakers were doing. We didn't open the floor up for the additional discussion, which comes after the motion and the second. That is what I'm dealing with at this point. That is what I wanted to make clear to you. So that's where we are. So we are now at the point, are there any more, is there any more discussion with my colleagues on, on, on the dais about this matter? If there's no more discussion, then we will call for the vote. I would ask that everyone please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 4-2.
Thank you. So now we will move forward with our regular agenda. Yes, let's take a, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll start with our regular agenda. Item 23-361. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Brown Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $115,645 from the U.S. Department of Justice, and appropriating said sum, said funds in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is any further discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
The next item, item 23-362. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $20,540 from the Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for implementation of the Whole Blood Initiative by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to adopt, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote electronically. Vice Mayor, would you please vote?
Oh, I, I hear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's adopted 6-0.
Item, item 23 dash, is it 26, 23-364? Or 363?
Three.
363, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $175,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court Program.
Move adoption, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-364. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $27,592.79 from the National Opiores Settlement Fund Trust, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes as defined by the Virginia Opioid Fund and Settlement Allocation M.O.U.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-365. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting federal block grant funding in the amount of $1,273,783 via the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for the delivery of services to individuals recovering from mental health substance use or co-occurring disorders.
Move adoption, second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-366. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting developmental disability residential support funds in the amount of $16,065 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide support for individuals diagnosed with an intellectual and developmental disability.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Item 23-367. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting problem gambling prevention program funding in the amount of $25,280 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide problem gambling prevention services.
Move adoption, second.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash three-six-eight, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting state opioid response treatment and recovery grant funding in the amount of two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY two thousand twenty-four Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide opioid treatment and recovery services. Oh, I'm sorry. The amount is two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred?
Eight hundred.
Eight.
I'm reading what's on the paper. I always have eight. Eight fifty-two.
Okay, so the ordinance has, we'll change it on the ordinance. I'm sorry. So two hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Okay, we'll correct the ordinance. Okay.
Move to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Item twenty-three dash three-six-nine.
That item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash three-six-nine, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
This is four forty thousand. Okay. An ordinance accepting state opioid response performance measures grant funding in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY two thousand twenty-four Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide opioid misuse prevention, treatment, and recovery services.
Move for adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Please vote electronically. An item two-three dash, I'm sorry.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item two-three dash three-seven-zero. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we're considering for this item?
Okay, I have it. Okay, a resolution authorizing the execution of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four agreement with the Virginia Department of Health for funding and services of the Portsmouth Health Department.
Move adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash three-seven-one, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we're considering for this item?
Okay, I think this is the one. Okay. A resolution affirming the City of Portsmouth's commitment to fund the locality share of projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation and providing signature authority.
Is there a motion and a second?
Move for adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted six zero.
We have now come to item twenty-three dash three-seven-two, boards and commissions.
Mayor, colleagues, there are no appointments to discuss tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item twenty-three dash three-seven-three, are we doing items submitted by council? Are there some other items submitted by council? Councilman Hugo, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So back in September, the City Council set in motion a Crime and Gun Violence Prevention Task Force. I spoke with the city clerk last evening. Our task force has positions for nine citizens. In two months, we've only had three citizens apply for consideration to join that task force. It's critical that we get that effort moving. And so I want to encourage our neighbors to, particularly if you have ideas on how to, to tackle crime and gun violence in the city, to step forward and, and volunteer to participate on that task force. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other items submitted by council? Seeing none, we go to item twenty-three dash three-seven-four, report on pending items. No pending items, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. We have now reached item twenty-three dash three-seventy-five, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limited, up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you would notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is William Britt. Mr. Britt, come forward to state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
William Britt, Sterling Point. Good evening. Every time I come here, I really get agitated listening to what's going on with the City Council, or I really do. Once again, we're going to talk about crime and other issues. We've had a downward spiral with the police department since two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. We've gone through five police chiefs, and this is not with the two council members here, with the, with this previous council. We've gone through multitude of city managers, multitude of police chiefs. People figure this city doesn't have this act together. People come into the city and break the law. I mean, it is ridiculous, and these, I'll leave these figures with you. I mean, these figures are accurate. As of two thousand nineteen, we were down to two hundred and seventy-four personnel with the police department. As of two thousand eighteen, it was three hundred and fifty personnel with the police department. So that's a hell of a drop. As of two thousand twenty-one, we're down to two nineteen. You guys are looking at each other like you're crazy. The figures here, look. I'm sitting here, look, body language means a lot. All right, so let me, let me finish. All right, so I'm challenging these numbers, and like I said, I'd be more than happy to sit down with the police chief and any council member and go through these figures. We have taken a downward spiral on police officers and police personnel. You know, the police department and the fire department are a first line to resolving any issues that we have that are dangerous. All right, my brother was murdered in two thousand and eleven, so me personally, I take this stuff personal. All right, and I think it needs to be addressed. It just agitates me, and we're sitting here talking about wasteful spending. All right, wasteful spending to me is frivolous lawsuits of over two million dollars. All right, in the past couple of years, for a state senator and, and a bunch of other stuff. I mean, you know, lawsuit with a car accident, and you know, if it went to court, it may have brought a couple hundred thousand dollars. This council chose to settle it for two, one point three million? Let's roll your eyes up at that one. All right, so this is a situation where wastefully spending my money and everybody else's money here that live in the city. All right, we need to go over and get a grip on this. It is crazy. It is stupid. And you know, it's like, I'm sitting here looking, and my blood is boiling looking at the city manager with this smile and covering her face and, and her eyes and all that. I pay a great deal of money in this city in taxes. All right, I was, I'm respecting you, respect me. All right, I respect everybody in the City Council. But it's something that you guys don't want to hear, too bad. You need to hear it. Because most of the people, and I'm telling you right now, next election, there's going to be several people voted off the City Council. I can guarantee you that. You know, every time I turn around, it's a racial issue. I mean, oh, blacks, whites, blacks, whites. Oh, the whites are no good, and the blacks are great. Blacks are no good, and the whites are great. It's bull. It's a situation, what's best for the people? You guys sitting there in this thing, sitting there saying, what's best for the people? Let's do what's best for the people, not what's best for City Council or your agenda. Let's do what's best for the people in this city, the people that pay the taxes. You know, I've been coming to the City Council meetings for quite some time. I'm hearing about what businesses and stuff, we're not bringing anything in here. Bottom line is, we're building more apartment complexes. Well, we had another shootout over at London Oaks. Twenty, twenty-five years ago, London Oaks used to be a nice apartment complex. All right, after a while, these apartment complexes deteriorate. Then you get owners that don't give a crap, and then you get people, they move in, these people that cause problems. All right, then we're going to go over to have more crime in the city, because we're not taking action to correct the problems. We don't need more apartments. We need more residents. We need more people buying their homes. We need more people investing in this city, not an apartment community. All right, you know, businesses, I was, the gentleman opened up the restaurant that was here last week. I went to the restaurant, talked to him, had a long talk with him. I wish him all the luck, because you know, stuff like that, we need. I don't care if it's black run. I don't care if it's white run. It's, we need businesses in here that makes sense. We don't need more apartments. We don't need more vape shops. We don't need more car washes. We don't need no, I mean, we need stuff that we need in here that's going to bring money, tax revenue into the city. And what you were saying about, I agree one hundred percent, we got the government who has property in here like the shipyard paying absolutely nothing. So we're taking upon that burden. What are we going to do about that? What are we going to do to fix it? We need to fix these problems. All right, we need to find a way to fixing these problems instead of going over adding to them with the rhetoric, racist rhetoric, and rhetoric about rolling eyes. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Randall Jenkins. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Barry Randall Jenkins, Deputy Minister for Section of the City of Portsmouth. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and Madam Manager. I haven't been here in a long time, and for it to be tonight, I want to speak on an issue that is, is probably going to put some of y'all in a predicament where you're not going to want to deal with it. But I think we need to be very serious about it, and this, in reference to, the pilot went with the story in reference to the gala. I, I believe that wolves were pulled over some of y'all's eyes as to how that thing went about, because when we speak about crime here in the City of Portsmouth, you got to look at the criminal element that are always sitting back trying to figure out how to scheme, how to get over, how to get ahead, how to get some money in an illegal way. And then we, on this side, you know, turn around and do it, you know, without anybody even questioning it. My issue is, because when you look at it, and, and I, as growth has taught me, you know, I'm trying, I'm trying to grow, you don't always have to look at it from the standpoint of everybody was involved. So I'm not here to accuse anyone of anything. But as a taxpaying citizen, I hope that you all take it serious, because this is our tax dollars. So now that you know, because we can never hold anyone accountable for being ignorant. So now that you know that that was not a Dorian Finney Smith event. I'm sure many of y'all thought that's what it was, and I'm all for getting behind our celebrities, people that's trying to make a difference, and they're coming back here to the City of Portsmouth to do some things and help out. So we want to get in there and, you know, put some skin in the game and say, hey, we support you. But it was actually Senators Martin Warner's Outreach Advisor, Ms. Erin Carter, event. We can't ask the money back from Bishop Jakes, because he actually did come in to do a service. However, I think that it will be becoming of our council members if you do not ask for that forty thousand dollars back. Because something that I think is very important that you all need to know is that the Hampton Roads Urban Agriculture, that is the organization that's on the peninsula, I believe, Newport News or wherever. I believe that our city manager, if she wanted to give out forty thousand dollars, there's many nonprofit organizations in the City of Portsmouth that could have benefited from that. But more disheartening is when you find out who is the Hampton Roads Urban Agriculture. That group or that organization is Erin Carter's mother. So now we have a young lady that was able to get money from the city and direct funds from that money to her mother's organization. That alone should cause us to be upset. To add more insult to injury, Pastor Milton Blunt, one of our prominent pastors here in the city, who is President of the Church and Community in Action, also President of the Martin Luther King Leadership Steering Committee, I believe his group from the Church and Community in Action, they purchased tickets. When the event was changed from one date to another date, they wasn't able to attend. They've been asking for their money back from Ms. Carter for, I believe, a month now, and haven't received not one dime. To add further insult to this issue that we have, if you looked at the flyer, there was another organization on the flyer that was supposed to be a benefactor of this event. Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Court, housed right here in Portsmouth. They haven't received one dime from Ms. Erin Carter as of today. Because I know how people like to sue nowadays, I want to get my facts right. That's a problem. That this is our monies as taxpayers, and if we gave it out, we need to make sure that the people are doing right by the monies that we're giving out. Because no pastor in our city, myself included, has ever been paid any, nowhere near that type of money. And organization, one organization whole, hasn't been given that type of money. So I believe Ms. Carter owes our manager an apology. And I believe our council should be asking our manager to ask for that forty thousand dollars back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. I think she's gone. Our next speaker is Laura Summers.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff. My name is Laura Summers. I reside at Five Irwin Street. And I am here tonight because I am tired of the city's repeated stonewalling of the Craddock residents regarding the moving of the Craddock Fire Station Number Eleven that has been part of the community for over a hundred and four years. Five years ago, our community discovered the city's plans to remove the fire station from Craddock to another neighborhood. The Craddock Civic League and VFW Post nine-nine-three sent letters to the city requesting to keep the fire station in Craddock. The Civic League Board at that time tried to offer alternative locations to meet the needs of the city and Craddock, as well as asking to be included in the planning process, as these decisions would greatly impact the community. But we were ignored at every request. Instead, the city chose to move Station Eleven from Prospect Parkway in Afton five blocks to George Washington Park on George Washington Highway, the current location of the Craddock Skate Park and Playground. For five years, the community has been asking, where will the skate park and playground equipment in George Washington Park be moved to? All this time, still no answer. For the June two thousand twenty-three Civic League meeting, an act, and a city official was scheduled to finally answer our questions. Unfortunately, he was a no-show. Rescheduled and a no-show for the September, October, and November meetings. That is four months we were again promised and denied answers to our questions. A little, let me give you a little history. The Craddock Fire Station was built for Craddock prior to the annexation, to our annexation of Portsmouth. And let me repeat, it has been a part of our community for a hundred and four years. It not only serves Craddock, but it is the first responder to some of the city's heaviest industrial areas, right behind Craddock on Victory Boulevard. At its current location, it is a short nine-block drive with no traffic lights between Station Eleven and Victory Boulevard industrial area. Moving it to George Washington Park would require additional traffic lights and stopping traffic both ways on George Washington Highway. This would increase the travel from a nine-block drive to a fourteen-block drive to Victory Bou- Victory Boulevard. George Washington Park was dedicated as Craddock's famous park in nineteen thirty-two after the Craddock Garden Club turned the two-acre garbage dump into a beautiful park. It has remained a- It has remained a park in the community for 91 years. Craddock was not randomly chosen for the skate park. In the late 90s, residents started working to get a dedicated park for the skateboarders in our area. Every request to the city was met with, no, the city has insurance issues with the skate park. In 2007, when I was the president of the Craddock Civic League, the city attorney approached me and said, the city no longer has any issues with the skate park in Craddock. It's all we needed to hear. The Civic League chose George Washington Park as a perfect location. The Civic League worked with city officials, neighborhood businesses and churches, Craddock Neighborhood Watch, Portsmouth Police and Sheriff's Offices, residents directly around George Washington Park and neighborhood skateboarders to work with our, to work out the details and layout of the park. Two years later, in 2009, we celebrated the ribbon cutting. In the past 14 years, it has been a popular place for skateboarders, trick bike, sickle riders and even people on scooters to enjoy. It has also been the site for the hard times go skate days held on Juneteenth for the last three years. So with the city's stonewalling, stalling us with information at every request, from my perspective, the city is going to spend millions of dollars to move the fire station five blocks, leave yet another vacant building in the square, a longer response time to industrial fire accidents or accidents right behind our neighborhood. And because there is so much reluctance and refusal to share the decisions from the city with regards to the equipment, I fear the plan is the removal of the skate park and playground equipment from the neighborhood, leaving no place for our children to play along with the loss of a two-acre park used by the Craddock residents for 91 years. Please tell me, are these decisions beneficial to the quality of life for the residents of Craddock? Thank you for your time.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, we need to have a update that that issue with the fire station's been going on way too long. So I would ask the city manager to give us an update on the status.
Yeah, I can definitely give that in a report back, but we had an economic development meeting today. So a lot of these things that if you really want to get the information, the economic development meetings are, you're able to come, it allows the public to come and participate. But just quickly, we are moving, we are building a new fire station. The skate park will be relocated. Economic Development Authority has purchased several of those dilapidated buildings in that product area where the old movie theater and a few other buildings. They have several renderings and they are purchasing that property to relocate because that fire station is older. I know that the fire department, they are in communications with how they want to, what they want to do with that building, but the park is not going away forever. The park will be moved when that time comes. I mean, but you can participate. You can go to the Economic Development Authority meetings. Those are actually taped if you would like to watch those. They're in the morning, you can, they're in the morning every first, second Tuesday. Okay, well, they're videoed, but again, they're on the website. But I will, I can provide and I can give you the number to the Economic Development Director so that you can call and ask those questions and get the answers or responses that you're seeking. But I can still provide counsel with an update.
Well, beyond that, I think in respect to the community, I think it would be good that someone attend a Civic League meeting and offer themselves to answer questions and maybe even bring some schematics there, renderings there on what is being proposed. Is that acceptable?
Wait, who are you asking to go to? Who are you asking?
Well, I was asking in deference to the community of Craddock to, instead of them having to go online or come downtown to attend a meeting, to attend a Civic League meeting and update the community on the plans and perhaps bring some renderings of what it's going to look like and a timetable.
Ma'am, we can't, we can't hear you from back there, ma'am.
They stated they would come to four Civic League meetings and so far they've been held.
We need you to come to the microphone, please.
We've had a representative from the city that has been requested and confirmed that they were going to be at a Civic League meeting in, four Civic League meetings, four consecutive Civic League meetings. And every single one, they were supposed to bring renderings, they were supposed to let us know what was going on and they are a no-show. Four months in a row.
Ms. Summers, I think, I think Ms. Terry will make sure someone attends. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Summers. Our next speaker is Clyde Toller.
My name is Clyde Toller. Of course, I live at 1029 Blair Street, Polyville. I want to thank the city, this council and everybody in this city for such a great thing they did for me on Veterans Day. I was the only military there that had been in the service, World War II, Korea and Vietnam. And the Admiral there, he was there and so was the council, Mr. Moody, quite showed the mail, you know, he was there, Mr. Moody. He was running around, but he had it all going on. But let me tell you something. Don't let ignorance and peoples come up here getting they tell you because if they are disrespectful, you don't have to be respectful to them and you didn't. But we as grown people shouldn't be doing that. We should respect one another on the council and I should respect you when I come up here. And if I don't, sit me down and throw me out. But look, you take care of that fire department because I almost got roasted in California, got trapped in, you know, one of them gutters and that fire, they didn't have another form and a helicopter come to get me out there and that fire was so high, it was every bit 400 feet from me, but it was just like I was right there in it, me and my troops. But we got saved by San Diego, fire department came down and put it out and got us out of there. And I got burnt out right in the city, my whole block. I was stationed at Camden in June. I came back to my home, my uniform was burnt all the way up, set right up here, just all the thing was hanging in the closet. So the fire department, I support you 100% because if they had had tires on the other truck that then there was a station right out and had it got there in time, they could have probably saved the whole block. But I got burnt out and I think you did a good job with them and I appreciate everything you did for me. And this was too heavy, too big, sign now, I'm set for you to see, but this is a token thing that I got that when gas was three cent, eggs was four cent, and when I came up, you could buy a new car and all, but I'm going to leave it with Ms. White office if y'all want to see it. And I'll leave it with you, trust you, we didn't leave it with you because it was surprising to me, but I got it anyway, but take a look at it. But anyway, don't let peoples turn you around. Look, Christmas is coming, but Happy Thanksgiving to everybody because it might be and it might not be, but I'm going to tell you now, Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas to all day. Keep your hands in God's hand, you'll be all right. You'll be 97 too, looking for 98 next year too. I'll be here. I'll be right here again. And if you want to come by my house, you can come by, I got something for you, a little white lightning, you know what that is. So a little drink in the morning, a little drink at night to take care of you. But you're very respectful and you're very respectful to one another. This counts. Don't let peoples upset you. I know it's hard, but some of them, I wish I had had a bit of my baton. They would be very, very respectful. But anyway, sign now, I appreciate all you do because, and I'm glad you did what you did for the fire department because see, we on the sixth floor up here. That elevator be out, somebody set that stairway off our, we'll roast the turkeys up here. You got it? So be careful and clean up this city. All right? Here we come, Christmas coming up. I think you should get on these peoples and tighten up our cutting grass and blowing it on in the street. And if it's a fine for doing it, I called the police one month and suddenly he said he couldn't do nothing about it. He wouldn't give him a ticket for doing it. But if it's a fine, if I throw some paper down there on the ground, he see me, he can give me a ticket for that, so how can you cut grass and load out there? And thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sheila Joseph.
Following something that he had spoke on, but I'mma put a little twist on, I was intending to speak about some things about the street sweeper. I feel that the money that people spend for the street sweeper to come in an area that the neighborhoods that I have been seeing it come through is cleaned by the homeowners and the people in the community. To me, it's a waste of money to send the vehicle out in areas like that. I think you should investigate and find out from the city workers what area really need that and save the money by keeping that park. I also wanted to speak about something I had said that I won't going to say, but I changed my mind because I pre-wrote it and sent it out. It was about, it's a possibility, I could be wrong, put me in my place, I can stay in the heat. I feel that we are understaffed in all different areas, not just the city workers, but the stores and different things. And I feel that some people leave to go get jobs at other areas because they are underpaid. But I do notice that the city workers that I seen out by the ditches, the streets, the garbage, whatever, and inside this building are working very hard and they are dedicated into doing their job. And maybe I might be wrong, but I'mma say it anyway. I just feel that many years that people have worked for the city, I still, the teachers and different ones, I still that feel in my heart that they are underpaid because they utilize their personal money for to do things for the children and a lot of people are not taking it in consideration that they love their job and want to see the children learn the best. Also, I wanted to mention, the last time I spoke on the 24th and the 10th of October, I spoke about this list of places that we went to do the smoke tests and I learned a lot, but I just wanted someone to take the time and tell me what kind of resorts they have received concerning the smoke tests and how it's going to be helpful to us as the citizens that is paying the sewage and the drainage and also flooded streets. I know that Mr. Wright is still working on some things, trying to deal with those issues, but I would like to have some update on what the city intend to do concerning the issues that I have in our community and at my personal home and the different things that I occurred from really 99 all the way up to 2016 was the worst. I wanted to also speak on the health environment in our city that I'm aware of and a lot of people didn't know that I had a lot of issues with health environment council. City of Portsmouth have a lot of people in this city with council and resort of a lot of environment that they lived in, Washington Park and different other areas. I would wrap it up and say that if you would like to learn more of what I'm talking about when I mention about asbestos and my brother died from asbestos and many others that I know way from this area. So the jar was at the factory by Washington Park, right across from the play park. That stuff don't sit down and just lay in dormant. It spreads every time it rains. I seen asbestos from Icy Norcom and nobody talked about it, but I have videos about it. And then they mentioned it after everybody tore it down and left. The school in Cavalier Manor, over from the shipyard, different ones died of cancer that I know live in the area. So I'm going to say, I might have been young, but I know what happened in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Joe Landon.
Hello, thank you. Joe Landon, Denver, Colorado. Mayor, councilor's manager, city attorney. I am with a firm called Lappas Advisors. We hold the bonds that paid for the city infrastructure that funded the Newport community development along Greenwood Drive and Missy Elliott Boulevard. The landowner of a large majority of that land has not paid their property taxes since 2011. We are not getting paid. You all are not getting paid. There are four outstanding lawsuits, three in Portsmouth Circuit Court and one in federal district court in Norfolk revolving around that land and that community. Four active lawsuits. I've met with the homeowners. It's a great community. It's got great people. It's got a lot of problems though that we want to see resolved. We'd like to see this community get stabilized. We'd like to get it back on the tax roll for y'all's benefit. I'd love to work with any of you to help resolve those issues. We want resolution and we hope to see some of that tomorrow in a mediation session with some of your representatives as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. If there's not any other items, that concludes our last speaker. That concludes our meeting and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.